So did you green clear out of that office for you?
Why is mine the only one that's already green?
They know that you want to talk.
No, I don't.
Tell me when we're ready to. Good. Okay, good evening, everybody. Like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the City Council Study Session. Before we get into our first agenda item, our monthly financial review, I did want to welcome our new City Attorney, Allison McKinney Brown, this evening. Thank you. It's been a long wait, so we're happy to have you. Welcome on board.
Thank you.
Let's move on to our first agenda item. That is the monthly financial review. Our Director of Finance and Administrative Services, Kathleen Rinkle, will update council on the February 2017 and December 2016 monthly financial reports. Good evening, Director Rinkle.
Good evening. Good evening, council. I just wanted to let you know that we've got some exciting news as we're ending December 2016. We just had a little bit of change. My live? Okay.
I think it's on, but...
Okay. I'll get a little closer. Maybe that'll help.
Yeah, you gotta get in there.
Okay. So we've got some exciting news as we end 2016. Very little change in revenues. Went up a little, $37,000. The expenses did go up a little bit, $5,000 or so. And we're -- look like we're going to have our revenues exceed our expenditures by $2,100,000. And that will add right into our fund balance going into the next year. So that's really good news. We're excited. We were able to do that by increasing revenues about half a million and the -- or, yeah, and decreasing the expenses by about a million six. So keeping control on those things. 2017 is where I'd like to focus tonight mostly with February. And we'll go through the report. I know you've read it, but we'll hit some highlights here. We're doing well through February. We've got our revenues exceeding our expenditures by 1.5 million. And that compares to only a little over a million from last year at this time. So we're a little ahead of the game. We still expect to be -- our revenues to be ahead of our expenditures at the end of the year by about $86,000, and that's equal to what we budgeted. So we're on target for budget. Moving on to page two. Again, we're a little ahead of our five-year average as well. Our year-to-date revenues at $7.7 million are 17.2 percent of the revenue budgeted, whereas last year at this time, we were at 15.9 percent. So that's a 1.3 percentage point increase over where we were last year. The general fund expenditures are also up a little bit, but not as much. They're only .8 percentage points above where we were prior year at this time. I would like to talk a little bit about the general fund at the bottom of the page. The estimated year-end balance is $11,053, and that is made up of unassigned, which is $7.4 million, the LTAR balance, which is $2.1 million, and the Tabor Emergency Reserve at $1.5 million, basically, is those pieces. That gives us a 21.2 percent reserve versus our 16.7, which is by policy. So moving on to page three. I think our -- we've got a few items I'd like to discuss here. Area one was down in sales from prior year, and that's because we've had two delinquent accounts that were paid in '16 that we're not seeing in '17. So there's a timing difference on that one, and that's why it was down this year versus last year. Area seven is up, almost half a million dollars. $230,000 of that was due to an audit that we were able to recapture some revenue from, and the rest of it is just some additional revenue that came in from outside sales. That does tend to be an area that is a little bit volatile for us as to what we can expect. And then I'd like to point out on the public improvement funds at the bottom of the page. We typically talk about the revenues, $467,000 year-to-date, expenditures of $2,505, but what this doesn't mention is that we had a carryforward, and we're working on spending some of that money from the carryforward, and the work is going forward from starting last year and moving into this year. Carryforward was over $5 million, so we've got some work ahead of us here. Next page, page four, gives you a pictorial at the bottom. The gray bars on the outside are our revenue, and the white and a little bit of black in some of these are our expenses. You'll notice that there's more black in '15 and '16, and that was transfers out that we made from general fund to capital. It shows up as an expense or an outflow from the general fund. There is -- I would like to talk about page six at the bottom, where our property mill levy is. And notice that we will have debt service this year for the police station. That's the big change there. Most of the charts on the next few pages, where we talk about the specific ownership tax, cigarette tax, et cetera. The budget and estimate are exactly the same because at this point in the year, we don't know that we're going to do much different, and things are coming in just pretty much as planned. So we're still comfortable with those projections. 2016, they tend to vary a little bit up or down from 2016, and that was based on our experience in how we budgeted for '17. On page eight, I would like to point out for 2016, our sales tax revenues were down from the year before, and that's 1.1 percent. You can see that in that short little bar that's pointing to the left at the top of The next few pages talk about tax collection by area, and we kind of went through that on the chart from page three. This is a pictorial of it, and the chart at the bottom compares it year to year in this cumulative February at what point we are. The next chart I'd like to point out is on page 11, where we talk about the geographic sales tax. And I'd like to point out how much the charts have changed from 2012 to 2016. We've got area sales -- area seven sales, which was like 45 percent in 2012, is now only 36 percent. Regular use tax was 2 percent, and now it's 15 percent. So we're capturing more sales that way. But our complexion has changed on the revenue collection. On page 12 and about the middle, I'd like to point out on the other sales tax and related items. Third paragraph down, the year-to-date businesses closed are 77. Now, this is only through February. And 66 were opened. So we've got a little bit of a gap there in terms of businesses that are giving us -- affording us sales tax. The next area I'd like to point out is on page 14, where we talk about the general fund expenditures. The -- and the reason I want to point this out is it bears a change, or I should say, it makes the graph on the next page look a little bit different than it would otherwise. The fire contract used to be in our direct government expenditures, and since now it's managed through the CMO office as a contract, it is part of the general governments. So when you look at the chart on the next page, where it doesn't look like our services from '16 to '17 have gone up, they really have. From '60 to '61, it's really higher than '61. I didn't calculate how much. But that is in the governmental bar just above that. So we really have increased the amount of services we're providing. The other area I'd like to specifically point out is on page 17. In that chart about the -- well, which chart? The chart with all the numbers. Let's look at that one first. Where it talks about debt service about two-thirds of the way down, I'd like to point out how much our debt service has dropped from February of '16 to February of '17. What we did there was we paid off the fire trucks, and that's that $2,330 you see on the next line down under February 2016. And that is why our debt service is so much less this year in February. That shows also in the chart at the bottom. When you look at 2016, that section at the top is the expenditures for the fire trucks to pay them off. On the next page, I'd like to talk a little bit about the transfers. These are transfers in and out. What happens with the public improvement fund for debt service is that they budget for it in the public improvement fund, but it gets paid out of the general fund. So since the budget money is sitting there, we need to transfer it into the area where it's paid. So that's a transfer out from the public improvement fund. And you can see in '16, there's $1,179 that goes the other direction. That is where we transferred money in to do projects. And we transferred it in from the general fund. On the next page, I'd like to point out that our fund balance, you can see where it goes up $2 million from where we thought we'd budgeted in '17 to where we believe we'll end. That's because we had the $2 million extra in '16, where we were able to save the money and move it over. You can see the white bar in the middle on '17 budget, $4,281, goes up by $2 million to $6,280.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Since we're up by $2 million and it's above what we budgeted, will we transfer that to another fund, like the public improvement fund or ...?
It's an option, but it -- right now, what's holding up our 21.2 million, was it? Or 21.2 percent? I'm losing my numbers here. 21.2 percent is where we've got our fund balance. Part of that is LTAR. If I took LTAR out, we would only have 14 percent.
Okay. Thank you.
So at this point, we will add more money to LTAR, but our revenue is growing, so our reserve has to grow too to stay at the proper level.
Thank you.
However, out of the $3,200 balance in LTAR, $2 million of it would be available to spend if you guys wanted to spend it on something.
Oh, don't tell us it's there.
Okay. It's not there.
I like your renaming the LTAR from later.
Later LTAR. L-T-R, yeah. Okay. Looks like an LTAR to me, I guess.
It did to me all along, too, and then when I heard it was later, I thought, wait, what? Where'd you get the later?
Because it was set up as a later.
Oh, okay.
Intent was later.
I'll try. Well, which way should I call it, then? Do you prefer later? Okay. Those were the big things. The other charts, I think you've seen, pretty much recapturing the same numbers that we've just talked about. Any questions? Concerns? Yes, sir.
On page 13 on audiographs, I've asked for this before, and it's just an anal thing with me, and maybe ... We could start not at zero. In Excel, when you make these graphs, you can have your starting point at a higher number. You can actually see what -- because some of those, you know, let's go the third, that comes on page 13, the third one down, you know, you could start that at $2 million. And you understand what I'm saying?
Yep.
I don't know if you do the graphs.
Absolutely.
They seem more real.
Maybe start it at a million and take it up to $2 million. Yeah, okay. We absolutely will change that for you.
Just been a pet peeve over seven-plus years, and it's never been done.
Okay. We'll fix it.
Then I can retire.
Okay.
Some of them were like that.
We'll fix these, though.
Question regarding revenue growth. Obviously, January, looking up regarding revenues and sales and use taxes. What did we estimate as far as revenue, total revenue growth and sales and use tax growth for 2017?
For the two of them combined, revenue growth, the sales and use tax was 3 percent, and I think we also bumped up the -- everything that was in sales tax was, I'm pretty sure, 2 percent.
Okay. So two, though, includes the portion that is sales and use?
Yeah, and that's predicated on, well, we looked at the state. They do a comprehensive analysis, and we use their figures for the budget growth.
Thank you.
The actual sales and use tax was 3 percent, though, so it was a combination of the two.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Olson?
Overall, I thought this looked really positive, and I don't know what I did. I left my iPad out of my bag. I don't know. I sure hope nobody stole it, but I had a lot of little points of things to ask, but I think mostly I was, in general, they were all in question about, this looks really much healthier than we've ever been, and it seems to continue. Where do you see the so-called fiscal cliff that people keep throwing out here? I mean, is it with the ...
In the presentation, we were going -- didn't have time to show you last study session.
Right.
We're looking, because we had that $2 million carryover, that it's actually moving out to 2020, and it crosses slightly there. There's not a huge gap of where we would start eating into fund balance. So I think we've got some opportunity to really work on that and change philosophies and whatever it is we need to change to make sure that that changes as well.
But on page one, where you have those going together, the red and the blue line, in the past, we've seen them cross before today even, and they never have. So, I mean, there've been times where we thought it was going to intersect, and it never has. So what do you account -- how do you account for that? And how do we continue to make sure that they stay in line with one another? Because we seem to continue to do that.
Well, I can look back at 2016 and say, you know, we really did a good job on controlling our expenses. Even though we set a budget that we thought was realistic, we really tried to beat that budget to be able to pull the funds forward, and we were able to increase revenue as well. Now, we don't have quite as much control over revenue, at least not the sales and use tax part, but we're working out strategies to help boost those as well.
To me, that seems like the key piece. I mean, you all are very -- and I think it's always been a strong thing that staff have been really good at being careful about what you spend. We can't control the revenue, although we can stimulate as much as we can, but still, it's really, it's like area seven. If that goes down a whole lot, we're in trouble.
It could. It's pretty volatile.
Which could, and it could in this next, I think you said even last week, or someone about, that could really dip, given some changes in some of that. So other than that, I mean, I don't see how we can do anything different unless we have other options for revenue.
And we're working on some strategies around that. I think it would be behoove us to look to be sustainable without the area seven revenue. That would be really nice if we can get there. I think that would be a good goal.
Do you think free market or fair market tax, whatever it is with the online, would change any of this? It seems like that's only a 10 percent we'd bring in.
It should, because we're not collecting any of that right now.
What do we think a city of this size would bring in if there was some kind of a tax in the area?
I don't have an estimate at this point.
Is there any formula for that?
I can't tell you who buys on Amazon and who doesn't, so I don't know.
My family does. I keep telling my husband, stop, stop. Thank you.
Question I might have is, what did we estimate expenditure growth at?
3 percent.
3 percent. Your first one?
I understand that this year, I know my taxes went up for property. The city, we only get a portion of that increase, but I'm contributing a larger portion, which I think all of my fellow residents are as well. Sorry. Do I have to say it all over again?
No.
Are we seeing that same, like, 20-some percent increase that in our property tax that we should be seeing?
No. Back on the bottom of page six, you can see that our general fund mill levy or mill has stayed the same. And what also is in the package, and we'll go through it in more depth next study session, is to take a look at what the state is doing with the Gallagher Amendment and how they're kind of ratcheting down the property values so that we're not collecting much more than CPI. So if your property tax right now is $1 million, you're going to see $1 million plus about 3 percent because of the way they've adjusted the percentages. We've been at 7.96, if I'm remembering the number right, for the longest time, and now it's going to be 6.56 percent.
For residential.
Mm-hmm. For residential.
Okay, so then why didn't ...
Why are ...
So why are mine like 32 percent higher?
Well, the pieces that we've got, we've got 3.8 mills more for just the fire station, but you have the school district that passed a huge bond this year, and they're collecting as well.
So that's where most of it's going.
Yeah.
Starting kids. I mean, those wonderful ...
You're going to start matching mine.
We had, Councilmember Russell and I had a town hall, and we had the Sue Sandstrom, the treasurer for Rappahoe County, and Scott, the new assessor, come in. And while they talked about the Gallagher, Gallagher is only the mix between commercial and residential. It does not affect the amount you collect, only who's paying it. So it's not going to affect what we're collecting. It's only the split on the 45-55 of who pays it. So that's only the ratcheting down of the residential, which means there's a ratcheting up of the commercial, and the pie stays the same. The amount of money stays the same, only who's paying it. So I'm a little disconcerted, and I've heard this in Littleton as well, with it being used as some kind of excuse that we're going to be collecting less money. That's not what the Gallagher Amendment, the effect of that has. So they're presenting again, I think this Thursday, or is it the sixth? At another meeting in Littleton, so maybe if you guys have some additional questions, you can go and find out exactly what they're doing. And of course, the mix of that split is not decided yet. That's something the legislature is taking up. So that hasn't been decided, but the amount of money doesn't change just who's paying it, and it is the residential piece of that that hasn't been messed with, I think she said, for a couple of, like, over a decade or so. It hasn't been changed.
Right. We've got more information on that in the full package, so we'll go through that indeed.
The pie stays the same size, so the, I think I asked Dugan, or at least he offered an answer. I don't know whether he really knew or not. And that was the money for the EUR-A property that got paid for, he said. Where did that go?
The, it's sitting in the EUR-A account. I mean, we've, we reserve, we put it there.
The money that they owe us for the property?
Oh, the money they owe us is a receivable because we haven't captured it yet.
Right. Where did it get received at? Where is the money? Where'd it go to?
It's on a payment plan, so we haven't actually gotten all the money yet? Or you're talking about the piece we have gotten?
See, that's not what it is. That's not, okay.
We did get a little bit.
I would like to find out exactly what's going on with that property, how much of it's been paid for, how much of there is on that five-year plan, and how much of that lot that we had has already been paid to us. So if we could just get that cleared up.
I've got that in the EUR-A stuff that we've taken together.
All right. Thanks.
And the second half of that payment's not until the 15th, right?
In of this year?
So far, what we've ...
No, it's 18.
Yeah, I think there's probably a lot of speculation or confusion surrounding this issue. What I think I'm hearing is a council member request, if we could get some clarity on how much has been paid and when and where those proceeds were received and accounted for.
Right. Thanks.
No problem. Councilmember Russell?
I was just going to add one thing to what Councilmember Berentine shared, and even though the share is going down, our property values are going up. So we're probably going to still end up paying more at a lower rate.
Receiving more.
Well, the city is receiving more, but as far as our tax bills and the citizens' tax bills that we're paying is not going to change that much, probably. Yeah, for residential.
Primary residence.
Primary, yeah. Secondaries and ...
Other questions or comments regarding the monthly financial report? A final question is, is the 2016 being audited and amended as these things are coming forward? I didn't see the '16 report in here.
Right. I didn't include it because it changed so very small.
Fair enough.
And we will bring the full report in May, but we're expecting, we're hoping that these will be the final numbers. The auditors have not found any adjustments yet.
Appreciate that.
They're working on their final week right now.
Finally, just one note is that as we come up with the monthly financial reports, if we could make sure they're posted on the finance website, sometimes there's a little delay there because, you know, my district meetings, I always go to that page and make, you know, reference that.
Okay.
But I had to kind of pull it from my packet last time, but I think we're just a couple months behind there. Other questions or comments? Seeing now, let's move on to Agenda Item Two. This is discussion on adopting the 2015 International Fire Codes. Fire Marshal Laura Herbland?
Herbland.
Herbland? Thank you. Thank you for that. Sorry about that. Will be present to discuss the 2015 International Fire Code amendments. Staff request City Council consider adopting the 2015 International Fire Code amendments to establish the minimum requirements to safeguard the public health, safety, and general welfare of the city of Inglewood. Good evening. Welcome.
I'm Fire Marshal Laura Herbland. I know some of you, and welcome to the new council members that I have not met. And this is Fire Marshal Chief, I always butcher your last name.
Manny Almagary.
Almagary.
All right. Thank you for that. You know, we'll introduce, since we've got some new faces around the table, we'll do some introductions as well. Councilmember Berentine, would you mind kicking us off?
Hi, Berentine, District Two.
Rita Russell at large.
Linda Olson, District Two. These are really sensitive so that unless you're right on them, no one can hear you that is listening, so.
Welcome.
Eric Keck, City Manager.
Joe Jefferson, Mayor in District One. Welcome again.
Rick Gillett, Mayor of Potomac, District Four.
Amy Martinez at large.
Steve Yates at large.
Well, that's the first time she's gotten to say that.
You're welcome. Okay, in your packets, I did put together a slide. Won't bore you and read to you, but I'll go through and summarize some of the main The role of the city in the building and safety and code compliance is for community development, the building division, and the Fire Marshal's office to review the most current codes. Thank you. Let me go ahead and switch this. There we go. To review the most current codes, these codes set a minimum standard for life safety, building safety, and energy requirements, to name a few. These codes allow us to conduct inspections to ensure that what was submitted for plans and permitting actually was built the proper way and that all the safety and compliance measures have been met. The Fire Marshal's Office specifically for the city of Inglewood, which stayed in-house as part of the IGA, maintains the annual inspections of all the businesses in the city of Inglewood. Little bit of history on the building and fire codes for the city of Inglewood. Inglewood enacted the first construction codes and regulations in 1943, and through these adopted and revised the codes and updated regulations through amendments. Prior to 2000, they were responsible for amending the uniform model codes, and after 2000, it's been international codes, and we're currently on the 2012 international So the 2015 code adoption process, as some of you may remember, went back as far as two years ago when we were going through IGA discussions with Denver Fire. So in late 2014, the new set of codes came out, which were the 2012 international fire and building codes. And we began the process of reviewing these codes and coming forward with you guys and reviewing them, discussing them, and adopting amendments. We did officially come in June of 2015, right around the same time as the IGA with Denver Fire was signed, and said, we're looking at the 2012 codes, and we'll be back once we've ironed out all the, you know, the wrinkles, get some operational knowledge with Denver Fire responding in our city, work through some of these issues, and see what becomes of it. And that we'd be back, and here we are. July 13, 2015, was the study session that I referenced. The process to review these codes was internally between the city of Inglewood, the Fire Marshal's Office, the Building Department, and the city of Denver. Denver, through the IGA, asked us to adopt light codes within one year of when they adopted those codes, and they adopted those in March of last year. So I think it was March, March or April. All right. The goals of the codes. You know, the, as you can see, our books every three years are quite cumbersome, some big changes, some minor changes. So our goals through looking at the new codes, switching from the 2012 to the 2015, our goals were to look at the compatibility of those codes and maintain a great partnership with the city of Denver, with their firefighters operating within our city, also the Division of Fire Prevention and Control, who acts as the quasi-state Fire Marshal for the state of Colorado. That's important on school projects, like the bond projects that'll be coming up, to provide consistency across the board. This really helps contractors and builders so that in every jurisdiction, we're not having a lot of changes and seeing a lot of different, a lot of different things and requirements. Obviously, the goal is always to minimize as many local amendments as we can and to minimize, for sure, the impact to business owners. minimize, for sure, the impact to business owners. So it's kind of a, tough to put in a few slides, I'm kind of condensing and doing an overview of what the big changes in this 2015 code look like. So some of my main points are, change the language to establish administrative commonalities for the authority between Denver Fire and the city of Inglewood and the Fire Marshal's Office. A lot of the language, and then you can see through the proposed amendments, some of the first couple chapters are the larger chapters with amendments because it really covers everything that we do on inspections and what the fire department's seeing and doing, and really tidies up some of the language and just all the administrative processes that we use. There's new chapters on marijuana and distilleries that Denver definitely was kind of the frontrunner invented throughout, you know, the new approval of marijuana in the state of Colorado. And also to provide alternative solutions to assist community development and building a new development here in the city of Inglewood. Since I was hired here in 2013, some of the restrictions I had using the code that was previously adopted were access, you know, the twenty-six feet access roads, and we're really landlocked. So some of these bigger developments that came in, I didn't have any tools within the code to give me any leniency to be flexible. So some of the things that Denver has put into their code amendments, I was happy to see because it gives me a little bit of leeway to, you know, if there's sprinklers, to I can, you know, decrease some of the access. Just gives me more tools, for sure. Chapters, chapter eleven, I think it's really important to point out that this code isn't every building that's, it's not a retroactive code. Chapter, chapter eleven covers the existing buildings currently. So this is where you would hear the term retro.
Can I ask you a quick question? This wasn't included in our packet, though. It was? Oh, okay. Because this would have been, when you get this volume of information, I just, it would really have helped to kind of look at what the changes were and the things that were different in there.
I apologize. I did upload it to the folder that should have been out in the packets, so I'm not sure why I didn't get there, but I can definitely update you.
Is it possible I could just get a copy of what she's doing so I could go through that? Because it would make this less cumbersome to do.
Right.
All right.
I apologize for that.
And if I didn't get it in my written one, then I apologize for that.
I did have a first draft and then a second draft, so I apologize that, once we critiqued it, I tried to make it a little bit more clear by explaining some of these chapters, like chapter eleven. So we'll make sure you get that. So chapter eleven is the existing buildings. I think it's important to point out that every code that you see that we're asking for amendments to is not going to be an impact to the, to the business owners as we, as it stands now. We're not going to be coming in and saying, oh, your building's sixty years old, you need to meet A, B, C, and D. That's not the intent of the code, and it's really, most of the, most of the chapters are based on the new construction and new semitals, the new schools. There's a, one of the big reasons I'm very excited about this code is with the bond money that the taxpayers are putting into our city, I'm excited to build them the right way and have the safety measures for years to come. Emergency responder radio coverage, that's a big one. We've been dealing with that with Swedish Hospital. As they added on and technology changed, the first responders aren't able to get radio contact everywhere in Swedish Hospital. So this was, this is one of the big things of this chapter that's just a must. Swedish is working on, they have planned to submit it currently to try to address those issues, and they're making those 2015 compliant because to them, it's also a partnership, and they want to make sure we have that communication. Emergency elevator operation, compressed gas systems, these really come into play because of the new marijuana chapters, and as the taxpayers told us in the city of Inglewood last year is, you know, they want to see some of these facilities moving forward. So this, this is pretty crucial to me to get these minimum safeguards into place so that when we have these businesses coming in, that we have some guidelines and are letting them operate safely, and their neighbors and, you know, the surrounding businesses are also safe as they operate. Firefighter fall protection, that's the skylights, and that was Denver firefighter John Whalen fatality about a year ago. Definitely one of those afterthoughts, and this is a good reason why we have amendments is, you know, it's something that we didn't think about. And we have businesses in the city of Inglewood that have skylights. So this gives us a way to identify those so, you know, we can prevent further deaths. How we look at the transition. So if we were to adopt the 2015 codes, we would do that in conjunction with the building codes, the electrical, plumbing, mechanical. We've been looking at these codes for two years, so we would like to, if we could, and we've been telling through our DRT process with developers, we're going to move to the fifteen, we're going to move to the fifteen. So they've heard it from us, you know, for a little over a year and a half now, so it's, shouldn't be a huge shock to people. And a lot of developers and contractors are pretty excited because it gives them a little bit more flexibility, and we've even been approached to allow them to use the fifteen before we even had the, have it adopted, so. So because we've had that, those conversations and asked for feedback and been planning it for so long, we would ask that we be able to, following adoption by council, implement it within ninety days. We would like to do it immediately on new construction, and I feel that's important because all the bond money that's going to be spent on schools, we're already in the planning process, they'll be submitting for permit anytime, and I just really hate to be behind the eight ball and have these new buildings, the new police station on old codes. So I would ask that we could do the ninety day. Obviously, if there was some hardship or some good reason, we'll always entertain that with contractor, and we're case-by-case basis if, you know, they had been in the design phase for five years or something like that. So we would definitely work through that. And I wanted to thank everybody that was involved in it, and like I said, it has been a, has been a long process, and we're approaching two years now with Denver as our response agency, and the Building Department and Fire Marshal's Office through inspections and response, you know, we've really have formed a great partnership, and we're seeing where our gaps are, and we really think that these amendments to the codes will help the response piece and the life safety piece for the city of Inglewood for many years to come.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you for your presentation. I'm going to agree with Ms. Berentine, Councilmember Berentine. I tried to actually read all these pages, and I'm going to be honest, I couldn't make it through. It's just, it was just so overwhelming, so.
I will say that, and this is the painful year because the format that we're looking at here and because there's so much administrative stuff because of Denver being the response agency and the Fire Marshal's Office being your local control, as was the direction, we really needed to work through the administrative pieces of this, and, you know, three years from now, five years from now, whenever we come back, it'll be easier for me to highlight them because it's going to be a lot fewer because this is just new. It's new to how the city of Inglewood does things, it's new with Denver as the response agency. So it's going to look much more streamlined, I would say, in years to come, and I agree, it is a, it's a big pill to swallow and hard to get through, for sure.
My, my question to you is, and I don't know if you were here during the discussions, one of the things we had talked about is that Inglewood would not adopt everything, that we would be able to choose the ones that we wanted to and the ones that we didn't. Did we go through this process and did anybody, and I don't know at what level, go through this and say, here's the ones that make great sense for Denver but not for Inglewood? And which ones make sense for us and which ones don't? I don't see a list of, these are the ones that we prefer for Inglewood and these are the ones that we're not. I didn't see that.
I did not attach that, but yes, we did. We vetted this for two years.
So you did that?
Yes.
We just didn't get it?
No.
That would have been helpful.
Okay, that's, that's two years' worth of notes and works and going back and forth. And what we really did here and through the IGA, if you look at Appendix B, it said to, to look at the codes and determine if it was going to be undue hardship to the building owners, where the measure of life safety was, if there was justification for omitting an amendment, what the grounds was for that. So we did, and we picked these apart, chapter by chapter, section by section, and it was thoroughly vetted by Denver, and the chief can talk about their process and how long it took, and I sat in on some of those hearings as well. We really do feel like this package provides the most common sense, life safety, minimum impact to business developers.
Which package? Which package? The one you have here?
Yes, that I submitted, the final package.
But you don't have your notes that help us to understand which ones are, did we decide that any of them we were going to choose? Because, again, I'm going back to where we wanted to be when we went to Denver, and Mr. Keck will remember, that was a big issue, it was about this, this very, very topic. And it just seems odd that we don't have the executive summary saying, and I just feel lost, I feel like I have all this information that means nothing to me, and I don't have what these.
Big pieces, and I, and because of just the vast size of this, is you haven't seen the building code, and you haven't seen the mechanical code, and the electrical code, property maintenance code, because we're, we're saying, let's let, let's let Inglewood be Inglewood on those. The fire, Denver Fire is our, your emergency responders. If there's good reason for life safety.
But they're not our fire chiefs. I mean, they're not our, you know, our.
No.
Fire marshal.
You're right. I'm your subject matter expert, and you guys ask me to maintain local control and do it, you know, the most respectful way to the business owners and to look out for you guys as that person. And I have vetted them, and with the, you know, Chief Building Official Smith, and now Karen Montanez as well, and, you know, we've really beat these things up and looked at life safety and looked at the direction and reasoning behind the codes, and I stand behind it. Do you have specific questions on any of the sections?
I don't know what to ask you because I just feel, maybe, maybe I'm the only one. But I feel like the information's been left out, and I thought we were going to be getting on which ones make sense for us, which ones don't. If they all make sense, if somebody said that in here, and I just didn't get that. So maybe something's forthcoming that we can look at at a later time for me. Maybe I'm just anal that way, I don't know. That's.
I do have my notes from Chief Building Official Smith and also the ones from Karen Montanez, and we did them by chapter, you know, two or three months each chapter, so you're welcome, if you would like me to forward all those notes, we can, we can do that.
Well, it'd be nice to have them in a.
Or Karen is.
An executive summary to us, since we're the ones that have to vote on it.
Thank you. Apologize. I don't know if it was Councilmember Russell or Councilmember Berentine, I think it was Russell.
Oh, give me that.
I just.
Sorry. Didn't mean to instigate a fistfight.
I just want to ask, listen, I just want to ask a simple question. Maybe it doesn't have a simple answer. Did we pass everything in Inglewood that Denver passed in Denver?
No.
Can we get a list of the things that we did not pass?
And that's why I was saying, the building code and the mechanical code and property maintenance codes, that's the, that's, that's where the meat and potatoes is.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
But the fire piece is identical?
We've our muscle before, I always lose.
The fire piece is almost identical, except, like I said, the administrative chapters that are larger are specific to Inglewood and the Fire Marshal's Office and inspectors, and how they, how Denver Fire reports things to us for follow-up and correction, and how we review our permits, I mean.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
I would agree with Councilmember Gillett that we're looking for that, just not as an anecdotal thing, similar to the PowerPoint being put up there, that the things that you did, that you're able to say just off the top of your head now, we, we need that information. One, I'd like to celebrate all the two years of work you did and be impressed. Give us a lot of papers. We'll go, wow, look how much work she did.
I have so much.
And I would be, and I would be happy with that because I want to be able to show that there was that deliberation, that there was that thought process going in there to exactly your point, what fits for Denver, maybe it didn't fit for Inglewood, and that that discussion, that deliberation happened, and what the outcome of that was, and memorialize it in some documentation would be awesome. I think Councilmember Gillett probably remembers that the last time we passed a code like this, an overreaching code, just passed the whole thing, and then months down the road found, years down the road, found out things did not match. These were lawsuits threatened and people who spent, you know, tens of thousands of dollars that trying to match a code when we didn't even have the city infrastructure to be able to make it possible for them to adhere to a code we passed. So changes had to come after the fact. So we want to make sure that this fits Inglewood and, and not have those kind of problems or that additional expense for other people, so I know that that generated some of that requests, because I believe that it was rec, that requested, that, that we have that, that in there. But one, I really would like to see that effort and energy that went in memorialized and documented so that we know and have some guidelines in, in here, that this was the thought process that went into the final product, so that we're not reinventing the wheel either, that if we have some question on the numero, first of all, to know what the new sections are, just like you did in the PowerPoint, but then it might eliminate some work for you guys that if we go, well, what about this? And we go, oh, I looked at your notes, and I go, no, they already thought about that. And that's why they came to the conclusions that they did, especially with such a large document. I appreciate the work you did. I'm not, I'm not bemoaning that because off the top of your head, you're bringing up so many answers, but off the top of your head isn't going to.
Right. And I did ask Denver Fire to be here as well, so maybe it would help for the chief to discuss the process they went through to vet the 2015 code and, and the reasons behind some of the major.
First would be that executive summary and to have that piece of this. You had two years. I had Thursday night to go through this, and without some kind of guideline to say, hey, here's what got worked on, here's what was talked about, here's what did fit, here's what didn't fit, it, it does become a losing proposition to just try and go through this as it is. I appreciate this, though.
And so I'm hearing, just so I'm clear, you said give you lots of paper.
Is that kind of summary?
And you want yours condensed.
Not three hundred and ten pages.
Okay, you could say, if you want more information, it's here.
Okay.
And here, here's the backup for this executive summary, because I assume that you're, I assume you're going to have backup to the executive summary information. So just so that it's organized, so that if there is some particular piece that does or doesn't fit from the executive summary, then we know where to go to find what that was.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates?
Okay. When we originally decided to go with Denver, the council was very clear on this issue. It was that we were retaining our Fire Marshal, we're going to retain our own inspections, we were going to stay Inglewood, we were going to have our code. We weren't going to just adopt Denver's operations. Denver's a much bigger municipality than we are, and they handle a lot of things that, frankly, we will never do, like a chemical processing plant and stuff like that. You know, you'd mentioned that you wanted to keep the amendments down to the minimum, although Denver, if we're to look at the other municipalities, Denver has the most amount of amendments. You know, we look at other communities, we're looking nine pages, twenty pages, we've got three hundred pages that you brought forward. I think Denver's official is three hundred and forty, so you cut out forty pages out of, out of the whole process. You know, if we were to adopt this, you know, there wouldn't be really much reason for us to keep our own Fire Marshal and to keep our own inspection teams, because at that point in time, it's Denver. And then at that time, maybe we should just hire Denver to do it. You know, there's, there's things in, in Denver's amendments, you know, like on fire panels. Every other jurisdiction, if it's UL-rated, brand-new panel, you can go right on in, unless this has been changed fairly recently, Denver has to approve it before you can use it. That's completely different than all other jurisdictions. Reading through these documents, there's sections in here that says, we will adopt Denver ordinances to meet up with this. We're Inglewood, we are the AHJ. We just don't blindly allow unelected officials to make the rules and the laws for our community. Denver is, is some of the most restrictive amendments out there. NFPA bases their, their coverage and their rules on scientific applications. Denver, they don't go through the same rigorous testing and everything that you would find in NFPA in order to make these amendments. And a lot of times amendments is just personal things on how to do it. We need to keep our costs down in our community, but yet be safe so that we can encourage the development. Denver has a lot of avenues of bringing development to their community that we don't. They have, I mean, they'll go and cater to businesses to get them to come in. We don't have those pockets. So we have to make an environment where there's less regulatory rigamarole, but here again, we've got to be safe. And I, and I strongly believe that NFPA 2015 answers those questions. Now, if we want to cover some specific items such as, you know, barbecues on high rises with a one-hour firewall, I can understand that. Barbecues cause a lot of fires. You know, if, if we say, you, you can have a barbecue there, but you have to have a two-hour firewall, fine, then let's talk about it and let's make that happen. firewall," fine, then let's talk about it and let's make that happen. But arbitrarily just take all of what you brought forward because I'm sure most of these folks have no background in this. And I'm not going to say that I understood all of it either because there's parts of this that I don't deal with. You know, currently, my answer is no because that was not the intent of what council said that they wanted for our community. You know, we need a strong fire marshal that can go through this stuff and make solid decisions to bring forward instead of bringing all of the items forward and say, "Hey, we're going to adopt it all."
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
Thank you, and I know that you, yeah, two years of work is a lot of work. One thing that could be helpful, at least for me and perhaps the general citizen, would be to have a list of where things have changed in a way that would impact both a business or a residence to understand what the changes were and if they really are not that different, then say that so that we know.
That's why I thought if Denver Fire could take the opportunity to speak to you.
Right, so I am fine with taking time to do that, we only have 10 minutes, but I would like the written down source, citizens can see it too. So, just a summary though, I don't, this is 330-some pages, I went through some of it and I thought, "I have no idea what I'm looking at." So, I hoped that tonight would be, and I don't know what the, I mean, we can't, this can't be all of what we do on this obviously because, and we're not there yet, so we're going to have to have another meeting which, but I will, I'll listen to whatever more you might have to say.
Yeah.
But I could use a summary of what is going to impact the regular citizen and the business owner.
Right, so where I'm coming from here is the number one, as long as my firefighters respond in the city of Inglewood, life safety is paramount. And I ask that, the beauty of the codes is there are no experts. I mean, I couldn't quote this thing, but I do know where to go find reference to enforce code. And I, you know, I would hope that the lessons we've learned the hard way, whether that be fatalities from citizens, from firefighters to the industry, feedback and suggestions we get, that I don't want to see you box yourself in. This gives you the latitude to adopt it and to move forward in the next code cycle to make changes specific to Inglewood. But it comes down to, like I said, it comes down to, as long as my firefighters are here and as long as we're responding, I fully support adopting these amendments. And I know that it's overwhelming, believe me, it's overwhelming to me, but as long as you have a fire marshal that has the latitude and you don't box them in, it's going to pay dividends for your city, for the safety of your citizens and the firefighters responding here. So, it is, it is feedback from industry experts, it's feedback from construction industry, fire alarm, sprinkler, oil, gas, so everything in here is as a result of lessons we've had to learn the hard way and I would just hope that you would take that into consideration and not put yourself in a box and learn the hard way.
I believe all of that. I have no question that's what you're doing. That isn't what, that isn't what I'm, I'm asking for some kind of summary that's helpful to the layperson to understand exactly where we've made changes and for what reason, so we can explain that. It's, I mean, I think you know, this is a big deal to decide to go to Denver. I voted for it, I was supportive of it because I thought it was the best service we could get our citizens. But I want to be able to show people if there have been changes in our code, that it's not adversely affecting them personally in a way that would, I mean, you made some choices in balancing and I believe you did that, I'm sure that was hard work. So, if you can point out where some of those difficulties were and what decisions you made that you think are important, I can't, I can't go through and figure it out otherwise. I need, I need an expert to interpret.
Yeah, chapter 11, and maybe I wasn't clearing the way I presented it, chapter 11 is, that's where I really made those decisions. Those are the existing buildings in the city of Inglewood, you know, being a strong fire marshal was looking at those and saying, "Look, skylights, that's a big issue. That's how firefighters are dying and just recently." So, I am going to make sure I go to bat for Denver Fire and that and say, "Look, we need to make sure that we're taking care of this." Elevators, we have numerous unsafe elevators, the city of Inglewood doesn't even take care of elevators and we defer it to the state now, so that's another chapter. So, chapter 11, those are the existing pieces where, those are, those are my call and yes, I did those with Denver, but that's the existing piece, that's the cost, that's the impact you're going to feel. So, chapter 11 is the big, the big decision maker on that.
That's helpful to even know.
The rest of it's new construction, so it's not going to impact the residents, it's not going to impact the citizens, it's the new development. And like I said, I mean, community development and the Building Department have heard this as well, is there are many people waiting to go to the 2015 codes because of the flexibility and more user-friendly this code is. So, I can, I'll pull together a summary for you and I'll even maybe pick apart chapter 11 more for you to see the existing chapter because that is the most important, most important aspect and I just want to make it very clear that, and not to take offense to it, but I am looking out for Denver Fire. I am looking out for you, I'm looking out for the city. You asked for local control, this is what I feel is the most important thing for you.
Thank you. You know, I appreciate that we're looking out for the safety of the firefighters who are risking their lives on a daily basis to help our citizens. But for example, like with the skylight, what do we need to do in order to make that more safe for the firefighters? What will be the regulation that will impact local businesses who might have a skylight?
We put in the amendments striping reflective tape, which goes around the perimeter of the skylight, which is like I said, I can't predict but what happened, but if we would have had that, obviously a firefighter would have been able to see that in conditions that were not visible at night, so that's one of the amendments.
Councilmember Berentine?
I think everybody said that they appreciate the work that you did, I just think that it's, we do need a little bit more information to go through and is there any problem with doing that? I thought everybody, I think we kind of had a consensus about just getting a little bit more information, delineating this, this was a really good start, I liked what you did with this so that I can at least look at what you were looking at and what the new things were and if we could get that, I think that we could have a level of comfort to go ahead and do that, but it appears we're just not ready to kind of pass it at this point, but I think it could happen, you know, in a timely manner if we just got the information we were asking for. Thanks.
Senator Yates?
And one more thing I want to add is, some of the programs we have in Denver Fire, like our licensing, those are policies, they're not really in the code, so we do have both that we navigate between policies and code, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Yates?
I would have no problems in passing NFPA 2015, you know, codes or, you know, excuse me, IFC codes for 2015. It's the amendments that I have issues with. Those are things that we as a community, we need to have these discussions. Denver's been working on their 340 pages of amendments for many, many, many years and I'm sure that some of them make sense to them. I can say, since I do work in the industry, there's some of those things that just don't make sense from a installer standpoint, from other community standpoints. So, if we were to amend that code, I just cannot willfully pass 300 pages of amendments. I can go in there and we can look at individual things to amend and I think that would be appropriate for our community, but wholesale coverage, no, so.
Thank you. I think I'm hearing a consensus around the table that we would like to probably bring this back for another study session, get a little bit of additional information, both from a executive summary sort of standpoint as well as perhaps some level of details surrounding analysis from sort of Inglewood's perspective, you know, taking a look at some of the more substantial amendments to the, you know, IFC 2015, as well as perhaps include some of your analysis regarding chapter 11. Anything that should be added to that as far as additional information that would help this council be able to move this forward in our next meeting? Councilmember Berentine?
Just anything of the 40 pages, just the decisions that got made of what got changed in there would be awesome and I'll give this, I appreciate this, I'll give it back to you so that we all receive this as a council at the same time. Thanks.
Did you have the, but I can put it in iConf.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you and thank you both for being here this evening to answer some questions. I know we got a little rocky start there, but I think in our next meeting, hopefully we can have a little more substantial conversation, move this thing forward. Thank you again. With that, we're hereby adjourned, we'll pick up next door at about 7:05.